Well, thank you all for coming tonight. And we're going to get right into the presentations. We're going to start with the Elementary Student Council and the Year in Review. And we have advisors and students here, so. Come up over here.
Amherst Elementary Student Council leads with a smile. If you want to be a student council member, you need to tell your class why you would be a great class representative and leader. Then your class will vote for two students to become their representative. Student council members are good role models for their classmates and younger students, must attend meetings once a month, share important news for the meetings with the rest of the school. This year's student council members are Ben Bannick, Henry Bernann, Amon Enright, Otto Lutz, Oliver Mitchell, and Kinsley Treppertowski.
We will show you some of the highlights we did this year. Fundraising. In November, we held a Falcon Spirit warehouse sale, and we raised $600 for student council.
All school activities. Every month, we decide on a school spirit activity and bulletin board. Some examples of the things that we did are PJ Day, Funky Elf Day, Cuddle Day, Teacher Appreciation, and a Critical Thinking Puzzle.
Community Outreach. We held a food drive, and the food was delivered to track. We also held a Toys for Tots collection.
Purchases. We purchased four sets of Portrait of a Learner signs for the elementary hallways.
We will teach you about the Portrait of a Learner trait, character.
What is character? Character is who you are, how you treat others. This can be good or bad, and it can change. You should treat others kindly, have empathy, which is to show compassion or care for others, experiences and cultures, to include everyone, to have perseverance, not to give up even when things get hard. Be a good friend, help each other out.
Now we will show you character in action.
Okay.
Something to think about. Did the dog show kindness, compassion, and perseverance?
Was the dog a good friend? Did the bird show kindness, compassion, and perseverance? Was the bird a good friend?
This is example for our monthly goals. Try to do one kind thing every day. Wow, did you know that if everyone did this one kind thing every day for a month, that elementary students would do 10,500 kind acts? That is something to smile about.
Fun fact. Each month, we would add an educational fun fact about an animal. The following is an example of that. Did you know when in flight, bats' hearts beat about 1,000 times a minute? Did you know some bat species can eat up to 1,200 mosquitoes an hour during their nightly hunts? Any questions?
The student council would like to thank you. The student council would like to thank you for your support.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Now we have our Energy Savings Grant group. So Margot, you can have the floor with your students.
There was a slideshow attached. I don't know if people got that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is it okay?
Yeah, do you want it up?
If you don't mind, yeah, we'll let them. Is that okay?
I don't know if it's logged in on that. Are you logged in with your Board Docs?
Are you in? Ryan, if you can just log into Board Docs up there.
Yeah, just log into Board Docs.
Oh, oh, yeah.
This is demonstration on how our webpage works.
Meetings.
Shouldn't even have to log in. It should just be in the public. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, look at that.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you. Okay. So I was just going to take a minute to tell you guys about the Renew Our Schools competition that all of the sixth grade competed in. It's run through Focus on Energy. So that's how we got the new e-gages on the school. Which of you have had a chance to look at the link on here? It's really pretty neat. This is some of the stuff that we did. We had a person from KEEP come in and teach all of the sixth grade about energy consumption and savings, and kind of help us take a little ownership within our school as to how to reduce energy consumption, and do the measurements, and take the data ourselves. And then... So sort of, kind of in a nutshell, what we ended up doing was we did an energy audit in about 20 different places in our building, taking light levels, looking at watt meters, and what watts were being drawn from different appliances. They identified a bunch of energy vampires, which are the things that we've plugged in that aren't on, but they still draw power. And we did some calculations as to like how much that is costing our school. And then we challenged a lot of the staff to unplug these things for the weekends and for spring break and things like that. We also had some literature added to like our checkout document for teachers to make sure that as you make your classroom map, you can check off unplugging all of your smartboards and your desktops and things that really don't need to be plugged in over the summer, but still cost us money. Then, we... So we do this five-week competition. And the way STEAM is, is I have a group of about 14 kids for five days in a row. And then they move on to the next special, and I get a whole new group of five kids for five days in a row. So we kind of would do one part of the competition, and then we hand it off to the next group, and then they would do a bunch of, it's called Student Energy Action. And they would hand it off to the next group again. And after five weeks, we would look at the data, and we actually saved 12.73% in energy costs from week one to week two. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but when your building budget of energy is over $100,000, it ends up being quite a bit in only a five-week competition. So I was really proud of these guys. They also actually saved more energy than any other school competing, even though we didn't win because we didn't have all of the energy actions checked off. We didn't earn all the points. Nobody beat us in energy saving. So I was pretty proud of them.
Good work.
This is an actual data. It's a picture from our e-gage. We have two on the building. Because we had two separate power sources they needed to install two, and then they kind of link it to the same website. So the website is live. You can check it out on this document anytime. You can go on and see what we are currently using right now, which is kind of fun, actually. Scroll it up. So this is just today. You can see like we're down here at the moment. But if we did for the week... I wish I could zoom up here. Maybe I'll just scroll down. You can kind of see like this was over the weekend. So here's Saturday, Sunday. This is last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And again, coming back on Monday. And what was kind of fun during the competition is that spring break was in there. So we got to kind of look at spring break, and then, you know, what are these different peaks? And why are they different? We had a teacher in-service day, so the students weren't there. And the kids all got to analyze this data, which was kind of fun. We had a snow day, so of course, nobody in the building but custodial. And then big old spring break savings, which was kind of fun. But then we had one more day where I had to email the staff. And I was like, what's going on with Tuesday this week? And it turned out that was ACT day. So there were... Was it just juniors in the building maybe for the high school? So there was a whole bunch of kids still not in the building, so less than what we would usually have, which was kind of fun. And then, I am super excited to introduce to you, we had three sixth graders who were very interested in writing a KEEP mini-grant. We met multiple times, which was kind of a challenge because we have different schedules. So we would come in. They identified what they would like to write the grant on. They wrote the grant. They took the pictures. And they got it, which was really exciting. So, these are people right here holding our light bulbs. So I won't spoil it too much. I'll let you guys kind of introduce it. But this is Lorelei Pillsbury, and Cooper Leck, and Will Smith. Okay, so who's up first? Was this Cooper's side?
Okay, so what we wrote our mini-grant about was recognizing that the sixth-grade classrooms had fluorescent bulbs, and we did not like them anymore. We used a Google Sheet to calculate the cost of using fluorescent versus LED bulbs, and found that LEDs would be a big savings for our school. We also chose the lights because they didn't cause any headaches, which sometimes we used to get. And they last a lot longer. And they also save a lot of carbon dioxide.
So we did a little spreadsheet here to kind of calculate out savings and a cost analysis.
This is a core slide.
Sure.
To light the classrooms using fluorescent bulbs for a school year, it costs the school $643.96. And for LEDs, it costs $363.91, meaning we will save $283.04 every year. By mimicking natural light patterns, especially in the winter when we get little light, LEDs help students stay more alert, focused, mentally refreshed, and in a better mood. We wrote this grant to help our classmates and future sixth graders who will be learning in these three classrooms. We hope it'll make learning easier and let them have a better sixth-grade year.
What did we learn along the way? We learned that the carbon footprint would be by replacing LEDs in three sixth-grade rooms, we would be saving about half a ton of metric... or half a metric ton of carbon dioxide per year from entering your atmosphere. That's equivalent to 570 pounds of coal getting burned in one year. That's also equivalent to driving to Orlando from here. The setbacks we had was between the time we wrote the grant and won the grant, the prices went up, so we couldn't buy as many packs as we hoped. However, we were able to buy a few individual packs with the leftover money.
I think that may be it. Yeah. So then, part of the mini-grant requirements is that we had to do a couple Zoom meetings. And they were present for... How many did we do? Was it just one or two?
Two.
We did... So we did two Zoom meetings. And then, we just finished up one more tonight. So it was kind of a share-out and showing everybody what they did. But there were only two middle schools there, and they represented us very nicely, so. And that's it.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We like saving money. We'll take it.
Good night.
And it's not standing room only anymore.
Okay. Anybody taking place in public participation tonight? Ask for policy. Where you can address the board on any subject? Okay. If you're here for something in the agenda, that's already taken care of. Okay, well, we'll go on to informational items. Future board meeting dates are June 23rd, July 21st, and August 18th. Next item is the Boys and Girls Club presentation. So you have the floor. We're going to use the microphone over here.
I can bring it up on mic. Which is definitely...
Okay. We just had a... It's under the Danielle Belsky one. There it is.
Okay. Well, it's kind of a hard act to follow. Anyhow. My name is Meg Earler. I am the current president of the Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors for Portage County. Danielle Belsky, our CEO, unfortunately isn't able to be here. She is actually with Century Insurance in Maui right now, representing the Boys and Girls Club. So she got to make the first choice, and she chose Maui, and I chose Amherst. So anyhow. I also want to say, I've got my Boys and Girls Club hat on, but I am also a member of the Stevens Point area Public School Board. I've been a member for about 11 years. So I feel like I have kind of a unique kind of way to see the partnership that Boys and Girls Club has had with our local schools for the 20-year... I think we just had our 20-year anniversary. So if you have any questions about that as well, I'm more than happy to talk about that. So I'm going to do a little bit of the presentation. Why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Dana Kaminsky. I'm the Director of Rural Programming. So I oversee our Rochelt site, Amherst site, Holman site, and Junction City site.
So I'm going to talk about the kind of broader stuff, and then you're going to be talking a little bit about the specifics about the programs out here in Amherst. So if you want to advance. So our mission statement for Boys and Girls Club, and it is our Portage County mission statement, is to inspire and empower our youth to realize their full potential. And our vision statement is to provide a world-class club experience that assures success is within reach of every young person that we serve. We just recently did a strategic plan within the past year. It's a five-year plan. Part of that was creating that mission statement and the vision. And it was also coming up with our values, that we really look to try to tag everything that we do to these values. First is that fun, making sure that kids have a fun time when they're with us at Boys and Girls Club. Inclusive, which means that we're providing a space for all youth, our ages. We work with kids... Well, our Junction City site, we work with a little bit younger kids, but we're basically six-year-old through high school at most of our sites. So it's really that broad group of kids with varying programs, depending on, again, those age groups, what those interests are. Responsive to the changing needs of youth and families in all the communities that we serve. Safe is a huge, huge part of us. We just got through our... Boys and Girls Club has us go through a safety audit. Every year, they come and tour three of our sites annually. This is something that's been going on now. I think they put that BGC, BGC of America, put that in place. And so, we spend a whole couple days taking a look at our sites. The person that comes from BGC is there when kids are there. They're seeing how we're handling things. Ultimately, we wind up with a report at the end. And we do whatever they tell us we have to do. We also trustworthy... We want to ensure that our families trust us, that they believe that we're going to keep their kids safe, that we're going to be partners, working with them to, again, help our kids have a lot of fun in those after-school hours as well as our summer programming after summer school, which is, again, what we're providing out here in Amherst. So, these are our programs for our summer. We've got our Berard and Teen Center in Stevens Point. That's first through 12th grade, serving all of the schools. We've got our McKinley Elementary School Center. We've got our Junction City Extension, our Madison View Summer Extension, which is a new program just this past year. We're very fortunate. Boys and Girls Club, in partnership with our school district, wrote for three 21st century grants. The purpose of those grants is to provide academic enrichment support to kids in those after-care programs as well as the summer school programs after summer school. We were able to acquire three grants, $100,000 a year, five-year funding. So a total of $1.5 million. It's federal through state dollars. And then, that will support our Madison site, our McKinley site, and our Jefferson site. The unique thing about that grant is the school district was required to be part of the grant. We were the fiscal agent, but school districts couldn't write it. I'm sure you guys have seen also that there's some grants that the legislature, both at the federal and state level, is providing to, not to school districts, but to nonprofit organizations, third-party sources that are working in partnership with schools to provide for that academic enrichment support. So with those dollars, we were able to open up Madison View. We also have a program at Sherrill Center. We've got a program at Rochelt. We've got your summer extension program out here in Amherst. And we're very happy to announce that we are going to be starting an elementary summer program site in Marshfield this summer that will then work into the school year. And we will be providing Boys and Girls Club support to the elementary level in Marshfield, again, starting this summer. Are there any questions about any of that at all?
So in 2021, the district here reached out to us to open the first summer we had. So that first summer, and I remember that it all happened very quickly. We had 37 club members out here. And I believe part of it, we were in the school. And then the other part of it, we were in the Jensen Center for that. In 2022, we moved up to 57 kids. And we were here the whole time and not having to split that time. In 2022, we had started our meal program. So in 2021, kids brought their own lunch. 2022, we started doing it. 2023, we had 62 club members. And as you can see, in 2024, we're up to 71. And lunches we served was 1,500, and snacks was just a little over 1,500 as well. And this year, right now, so far, we have 68 children registered. I do... I think that will go up to at least 75. We typically have around this number. And then there's always like that first week or two, parents are like, oh, I need some care for my kids. So that number will go up. So here in Amherst, we have from... They have to be six-years-old to sixth grade to come to our program. Once they're in, if you have a seventh grader or an eighth grader, they can go to the Teen Center in Stevens Point. Our hours of operation here are Monday through Thursday, 12:30 to 5:00. And then that is when there's summer school. And then when the summer school is out, then we are 7:30 to 5:00 out here. So those kids from 7:30 to 5:00, we serve them breakfast, lunch, and a snack. Our programming dates are June 9th through August 8th. And out here, we do have, it's a little different, our fee structure. a little different, our fee structure. For the first session, it is $100, and for the second session is $200, because we have them full day for those. And then if there's any kids have free or reduced lunch, they just pay the $10 fee for the entire summer, because we don't want finances to be a barrier why kids can't come to club.
I just want to comment, that time is actually wrong on there. So the summer school weeks, they actually are running from 11 o'clock to 5 o'clock. They're not starting at 12:30 here. They're actually starting at 11 o'clock.
Yes, they are. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Just in case anyone was watching.
Yes.
So when we're out here, we want it to be a, that's last summer, a great place for the kids. So we do have Triple Play, Club Creates, where it's more art stuff, Theme Cooking Club, Green Thumb, and Youth Force. And this, again, this would be a full-day schedule if the kids were here, full days. So starting at 7:30, we have breakfast, and then a member meeting. We have club programs, lunch and recess, another program we'd have for the kids, and then a snack. And then the kids typically have open club, and parents are picking kids up.
So I'm not going to go through all those, but this is our 2024 impact in all of the programming that we're doing. And the reality that we're, you know, we're supporting thousands of kids, we're supporting those families, we're supporting the food in particular, that 87,277. The food is a, so if a Boys and Girls Club site is located in a school geographic, you know, kind of the attendance area, and that school meets certain criteria for free and reduced lunch, the federal government provides that food for free to the site, to all of the kids at the site, whether or not they qualify, they would qualify for free and reduced lunch. For the other sites that don't meet that criteria, then Boys and Girls Club, that's part of what we budget. And we, just like a school district, we work with the federal government and are subject to, you know, those same sorts of guidelines that your lunch program is out here, your breakfast and lunch program is out here. So we feel, we're just very happy that we can support families. We feel that it is, it's definitely a need within the communities. The families are grateful, the kids have a wonderful time. I can't say enough about, again, putting on kind of a school board and a Boys and Girls hat, the partnership and that seamlessness. Oftentimes, for our after-care programs and our after-summer programs, we'll have some of our school personnel who may want to work an extra couple hours. They know the kids, they're with the kids. That's part of what that Century 21 grant has allowed us to focus on with those three organizations. So here are our next steps. So like all BGCs across this country and all school districts across this country, when we opened out here in Amherst, we were kind of in COVID, and there were ESER dollars that were available and that Amherst School District had, Point School, you know, all of us had those dollars. And one of the ways we could spend them was on Boys and Girls Clubs programming. And so that's what Amherst has been doing, and we're very, very grateful for the support and the partnership that we've had. As we all know, the ESER dollars are gone. And so now, we're moving forward with that, how are we going to fund these services? And this is the first year that the school district has not had those dollars to help support us. Stevens Point, last year, for the first time ever, in order to provide some support with respect to our elementary sites, or several of our elementary sites in Stevens Point, did use Fund 80. We never had done so. We wound up, our school board unanimously chose to add two cents to our levy, again, to support that programming. And what we are doing out here in Amherst is we need about $38,000 to operate that summer program. It's basically our staff. It's our food. It's field trips, program materials, the, you know, what we need to help support these kids and let them have a fun summer with us. We, in our budget, will receive about $8,000 from our membership fee revenues. We did reach out to United Way this year and ask if they would increase our Portage County allocation specifically to support the Amherst program, and they came forward with additional support for us. And we also have received some support from a few local companies within Amherst. So we currently have about $18,000 left to raise. We are looking at beginning an annual mailing appeal. We are, we have a parent committee meeting set up for that June 11th, and we are looking to develop a fundraiser this summer to help us sustain this programming, to help us pay for this summer, because that's where we're at, and then also to allow us to be able to continue to work in partnership with Amherst for summers to come, you know, for as long as we can make this resource available to kids and families. So we, Boys and Girls Club has a pretty unique funding system, and it is a philosophy that BGC has had. It's nationwide, and it is that we want every child that wants to come, every family that needs our help, regardless of ability to pay, to be able to come. So our fee structure is set incredibly low, both for our kids who can't afford to pay, as well as for our families who potentially could afford to pay more. And what we ask of those families as part of that funding structure is to support us through donations if they feel that they are able to and if they would like to, in addition to those fees that they're providing. The rest of our funding is the fundraising we do each year, which is substantial, and also the grants, whether they be federal grants, state grants. We apply for and receive some grants through Boys and Girls Club of America. We received some grants through Boys and Girls Club of America from some national and international companies. But it's really that every year, kind of putting our mind around, how can we make sure, as a community, that we can raise those dollars to support these kids and families who are counting on us, to, for them to have a safe place while parents are at work during the summer, while parents are finishing up work during the school year. And so, again, we appreciate the support that you've provided, and we love to chat with you. Have any other thoughts about how we can work to raise those dollars so that we can continue to provide this programming? It's a great program. I mean, it's like here, I felt like I was at a BGC meeting, you know, with these kids. I mean, it's, it's, the kids love being there. They, especially when it's a school program, that they don't have to transition, you know, the bus isn't taking them. They're still at their school. They've got, some of them, their teachers or their EAs are there with them. And it's a wonderful partnership with the school district and BGC, because we can collaborate together on what each of our individual schools are doing in each of our individual locations, and how we can work seamlessly with each individual school district to provide the support to the kids within that program, what they need. And so there's a collaboration with the school district, with principals of the buildings, to really figure out, again, how to work together to take care of these kids while mom and dad are working.
For some of our families and viewers and potentially businesses that are watching online, do you have a communication that they can reach out to if they're interested in donating or have some ideas for you?
Yes, they can clearly reach out to Danielle Belsky, who is the president of, I mean, she's the CEO of, they can reach out to you, and I'm sure you'd help, you know, funnel them to us. They also can go on our, we have a website, you know, and so they're more than welcome to go on that. It's got all the contact information. We have had some initial reach out, reach out with Central Waters about the possibility of a fundraiser this summer. I know that they've been a wonderful partner for lots of organizations out here in Amherst. But again, if you have any thoughts, I know, I know people in this world today are getting asked from every which way, and it's really about, you know, if this is a valuable resource, let's see how we can keep it going.
And then we also have that meeting on June 11th.
Yep. And they can call me. My phone number is 715-491-2448, and I am happy to take calls. And I can't, I'm just, I guess, I love BGC. I love what it does for families and for kids and for communities. So anyway, are there any other questions at all?
Not at this time, I guess. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your support. Thank you for your partnership. Appreciate it.
Do we have a PTO report tonight?
Is there a PTO?
Yeah, they were looking on reorganization and nominations, et cetera, so I don't think they'll have.
If they come later, we'll fit them in there. Okay. Well, then we're going to go on to Administrator Supervisor Reports. You want to start with the stellar virtual update?
Yeah, I will definitely start. So first off, there's a couple teacher thank-you cards that's kind of circulating in the tables that you might have seen. Some of those have come from, or come after, rather, our Teacher Appreciation Week. So I definitely want to take a moment to, once again, thank our teachers and all of our staff for what an amazing year we've had. It really has been a great year. We appreciate them so much. And, you know, our challenge to them was to finish the year as strong as we started and as strong as it's been all year. So our goal is to make sure that every kid that leaves here for the summer is incredibly excited for the summer, but incredibly excited to come back and see us again, and just leave them with a lasting good thought about us here in Amherst and Tomorrow River. With that, graduation is this Friday. I know what's on our agenda a little bit later to figure out who will be sitting up front by me and helping pass out diplomas, but all of you are obviously invited. That should be a great event. It is going to be outside and at night, once again, on Friday night. So we're looking forward to that change. Other event that I would like to invite the entire board to is our end-of-the-year Staff Salvation Breakfast on Friday, May 30th at 8 o'clock. So please feel free to join us at that event. So we will be giving out some Years of Service Awards at that time. We'll be recognizing all of the newlyweds, the new babies, the new degrees, and, you know, having lots of fun and some laughs together as we celebrate the good year. After that, we've got kind of two things we're preparing for, for our June agenda. The first is our Stellar Virtual Contract Talk. So we're still kind of going back and forth on some of the contract language. It slowed a bit just because we knew we had so much time, and then we kind of stalled over some of the insurance language this week. So I said, you know what, we have plenty of time, because we were looking at making '25, '26 a planning year. So my hope is, in June, I'll be able to bring a contract and our final recommendation for partnering with Stellar Virtual to make next year a partner in year. And then we would be set to have, to be ready for open enrollment when that opens next winter. The other big item we'll be bringing to our June Board meeting will be our facility study. So we have met with Huffman, CISA Ten, Performance Services, and Nexus, all very different services. Some provide free services, some just buy payment. And they're all very different in how they do business. So Robert Smith and I are going over the pros and cons of all. All are good in their own right. We'll bring a final recommendation for moving forward with our facility study here, and that's also going to extend to the Tomorrow River Charter as well, to help us meet our needs out there. So those are the big things that are on our plate that we'll bring in in June, and that's it for my updates.
All right. Thank you. Here's Adam's AD report for this month. Middle School Track, our middle school athletes did great this year. We had multiple athletes make the state track meet this coming Saturday. Middle School Softball and Baseball, the Boys and Girls played fantastic this year. We did have a lot of rainouts, but managed to get most of our games in. They played tonight and finish up their season this Thursday at Port Edwards. Varsity Baseball, the Boys are in second place in the conference, and we will know who they play in the playoffs this Wednesday night. They play at Wega tonight, at Manawa tomorrow, and at Bondwell this Thursday. Varsity Softball, the Girls play at Wega today to finish out their regular season. They received the seventh seed and play at home this Thursday against Northland Pines at 5 o'clock. Varsity Girls Soccer, the Girls play tomorrow at Regis and then finish out at Assumption next Tuesday. We will know who they play in the playoffs this Wednesday night. Varsity Golf, the golf team is conference champs. This is their first conference championship in 23 years. Congratulations to them. They will play Regionals on May 28th at New London. Congratulations and good luck to all our golfers. Varsity Track, Conference was this past Saturday in Rochelle, and we had many PRs. Tomorrow is our last track meet before Regionals in Rochelle. Regionals is in Wapaka on May 27th at 4 o'clock. Good luck runners, jumpers, and throwers. Ultimate Frisbee, we play at Madison this weekend for the state tournament. Good luck to the Trash Kids. That's their acronym. Girls Flag Football, we lost to Wega in our game last Friday. We play on Saturday, the 31st, at home, starting at 11 a.m. That's the report from Adam. Thank you, Adam. Good luck to all the upcoming tournaments and events after that. Al, you want to give us your report for the charter school?
I didn't take too much of your time. After the end of the open enrollment period, our enrollment for next year looks really great. The virtual school continues to grow, and our onsite school will be, we can hold 219 as like the number, and we'll be at 210 most likely next year. A lot of that credit to the teachers, who put on this really great program at the school this year. A lot of success. We just had our spring fling event on Saturday in the new amphitheater area. Tom Pease performed. My kids love that. There was a magician. There's a band called The Algo Rhythms, which was me and some of the dads from the school. We did a little, yeah, a little dad band. It was super fun. Yeah, it was a really great event, and the weather was still warm before it turned to be pretty cold. Our eighth graders are right now out on their way to St. Louis and then into the Hot Springs in Arkansas on their trip. They get back on Sunday, next Sunday. So they just left this Sunday. And yeah, I mean, it's been a great year. I met with Ryan to review my goals for the year, and it's funny how the goals, you think, oh, in your new building, your building, buildings that you're going to have focus on, and how they, like, oh, you may be way off, as we kind of went through the year. We really built systems this year. That's in my focus. We don't have a lot of systems. We have things that were, you know, predicated on one person, you know, and if that person were to leave, then it kind of crumbles. So we spent time looking at our behavior systems this year, a lot of financial systems that we were building and rebuilding. So that was real, I know I've said this to Ryan and hopefully to you, it's been really fun this year, working with the group of people who, the problems that many folks think are big problems, they're like, oh, yeah, we can manage that. They're like, we used to have outhouses for bathrooms. So that's their mentality when it comes to solving problems on the school. So it's been, it's been a really fun year. So thanks.
Thank you.
Great.
Any other reports?
I can read you some, tell me some good stuff.
Okay.
To this day, I still sing that song in my head on school board meeting nights. So whoever is to blame for that, you know, thank you very much. is to blame for that, you know, thank you very much. So, I just want to, again, say congratulations and thank you to Margot and her students for that outstanding presentation on Renew Our Schools and the grant and the work that those kids did. She worked very hard to manage a lot of different students and a lot of different moving pieces, so I'm really pleased with the work that she did with her students. Jenny Martin, our eighth grade science teacher, is tomorrow actually bringing in a speaker from Northwind Solar to connect with her students. The eighth grade classes it has for many, many years build solar powered cars during our fourth quarter. I've seen some of these cars in action, and they're pretty impressive, both in terms of construction and performance. This is a really great opportunity for our eighth graders to connect with a local company and hear some more about solar as we continue to move in that direction here in the district. So, it's pretty great. We are also gearing up for our end of the year trips for our fifth and sixth graders and our seventh and eighth graders. Fifth and sixth graders head to Prairie Hill Park in Appleton and then on to a Timber Rattlers baseball game. Our seventh and eighth graders will be headed to Mount Olympus for some fun in the sun and hopefully the water, the weather holds. Middle school students earn these rewards through consistently good behavior over the course of the school year. It's pretty great to see the kids striving to earn these rewards and reap the rewards of their good behavior over the course of the entire school year. It is difficult to believe that the year is winding down and that it is May. That's the news from Blake Wobegon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, or?
Right now, we're just finishing up and testing one more test to give. Since one night through the 20th year, we're up about 300% of the expectation. I mean, these are really good. Another test of your test. ACT results came back, which apparently I can't talk about until October, but they're, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right.
And, um, I think that's the two main things. Senior week, so God knows what's gonna happen this year.
Be ready for anything, yep.
Be anxious.
Okay. If that's all, I will move on. Unofficial enrollment report, I don't think everybody's escaped yet. Let's see what we have here. Numbers are holding steady. For some reason, we're down by about three in the, in the 4K through 12 site, but Charter School is holding steady. We are currently at 12,000, what, 1,213, Jim, for the month of May, that's two less.
I need some help.
I rang a few bells when I said that, I apologize.
Some days it feels like something.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It requires approval. If there's anything you want to pull out and talk about individually, say so now. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
On second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We move on to discussion action items. First item, discuss and select a board member to hand out diplomas this Friday, the 23rd.
I make a motion. Mr. Ginsby?
Yep.
I'll second, Bob. He's not here, so we're gonna make him do it, right?
Well, he's the one.
No, I know.
We make him do a speech as well.
Can we put that in our motion?
That could be a good thing. Should we put that in the motion?
Oh, my gosh.
Wait, my phone is vibrating.
Yeah.
No, we have a motion second for Bob to hand out diplomas along with Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Review and possibly approve early graduation request for January 26. And that one is in your packet, copy the document. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the early graduation request.
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? You good?
Sorry, Bob, Dan.
That's okay, I was, I thought you were looking.
I'm not paying attention.
All right, so then we have review and possibly approve education employment plan. That's, you have the floor for that? Yeah.
I'm worried about that question about it, but.
There's not much new from, last year we updated the, the plan month through, a lot of it stays the same. We had a day with CISA so that they could share with us some of the new ACP requirement state standards, so we have those starting to incorporate, but they're still working on releasing some of the, they're putting together lessons and age appropriate, that's supposed to be coming out late July, probably more like August. Otherwise, most of it is pretty similar to what it's been. Are there any questions?
Any new partnerships out in the community, or is it about the same?
Um, you know, I signed up a student for our new YA out in Culver, which we have not, new partnership that we have not had in the past, which I'm really looking forward to because they're also, how we cut it, actually, there's parents down in the elementary who came through during open house through the STEAM Center and connected with one of the teachers over there and was like, hey, this is our company, it's a pretty significant company over in Culver, and they wanted to just jump on board, and so we have a, we have a student starting there. So, there is a new one and a big point from within. So, all those are really good, but yeah, there is a pretty strong partnership, but we really can always do more.
Okay. Any questions? Doing great work, keep it up.
And that's something that we'll have to bring you guys for board approval every year, that's one of the requirements for soon. Thank you.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the education for employment plan.
On second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Review and possibly approve the Charter School pupil services contract, contract for Jenna Henry. That's a new hire. It is Jenna, right, or is it, okay.
Yep.
Good hire, really? Yeah, that's good.
Good pedigree, I mean, you read the, very well trained. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the pupil services contract.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Review and possibly approve requests for installation of batting cage, I believe we talked about this in the finance meeting. I'm looking for a motion to table it for further details.
A motion to retable it, Marla's asking for more information.
Yeah, specific.
Specific with buildings and grounds and how that, how that operation will go, I would say.
And electrical, so all of that.
Okay.
How much it's gonna cost us.
All right.
That's like three different motions, right? One with.
I guess you could say, if, like you said, it all has to do with building and grounds.
Right.
And more information.
Cost for the, cost for the services provided by the district. We need specific, and we don't have those numbers yet, so can you get a motion out of that?
Is that good?
Okay.
Sure.
All right. So, we have a motion in a second?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries that, it's been tabled. Review and possibly approve summer travel stipend proposal.
All right, so there's a memo in, in the board packet on this, and I won't go over the, the full history here, but the, the partial history is we've been consistently inconsistent here on, on our, on our practices for, for this. So, we, we have given some stipends for some past travel, but not all. It's been somewhat, it was been promised to some and not, not given as an option to others, so what we're trying to do is, is standardize the process a bit, as well as offer an incentive to, just to make sure that we can, can keep offering the, these sort of trips. You know, when we, we've asked around to other districts to see what some of their practices are, they're definitely all over, over the board, some, some do not pay at all, some give somewhat of a stipend or have it built within the price of, like, what, what a person would get paid for their core curricular, you know, advisor pay. And, and many of the smaller districts and some of the districts within our conference are, don't do a whole lot of traveling either.
Right.
We're fortunate that we have some staff members here that like to, to offer this to students, so we'd like, again, we'd like to make sure we incentivize that, make sure that we continue to offer this for folks, and make sure that our staff aren't paying anything out of their own pockets in order to make these things happen here. And as a, as a 10-year vet of taking eighth graders to Washington DC, I can tell you, it doesn't feel like a free vacation when you're chaperoning, you know, 200 eighth graders in DC. So, when, when you're getting that phone call at midnight that, you know, somebody got sick in the room or what, whatever, you, you are, you are working 24/7.
I'm having flashbacks right now on all the trips I took kids on, so, thank you for that. So, we're looking at a maximum of $500 total per person?
Correct.
That would be one, the trip organizer and at the most, two chaperones?
Correct.
Okay. So, max per trip, if it were five days, we're looking at 1,500. Seems reasonable, and it's consistent.
Consistent, yes.
Well, wait, it wouldn't be three, because it says the lead trip organizer and one staff.
But it says will not pay.
More than two.
Two adult chaperones. Is that's different than the staff member?
Including them.
Including them.
Okay, just the wording, I'm just interpreting the wording.
Nope, that's okay, yeah, I was just reading the first line, says we're recommending the lead trip organizer and a staff chaperone. So, my understanding was two.
Yep. Yep. So, so what it would apply for this year would be our eighth grade DC and also our Spanish district.
Okay. That answers my question then.
Okay.
I need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve summer travel stipend proposal is presented.
I'll second.
Motion in second, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Review and possibly approve Charter School 24, 25, end of year budget expenditure requests. We had some discussion in the finance meeting, and we know that the number is smaller, but there are definitely needs there, and they're spelled out in Al's document that he provided us, so if you have more questions now, you can ask them.
So, what are we asking, what are we making a motion for then?
The staff computers and the student Chromebooks, correct? The top two.
Yep. And, and the motion will work, if you look, scroll to the end, it says we're recommending approval of spending projected surpluses in the listed order priority until the funds are depleted.
And it wouldn't, it actually, wouldn't it be all of the money, the surplus, the number would be lower than what?
It's lower than what you see there, yeah.
Right. So, then I'd use it on.
You'd use the first line, then on the second.
Yep, and then we wouldn't go to the third.
Right, yeah, yeah. And there's something crazy happening.
It would be the staff computers and then the Chromebooks, that's what we would have funds for.
So, then?
You want to just ditto my motion?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, you make it, someone else second.
The surplus funds are recommended until they are depleted?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Review and first reading of new Neola policy, Act 20, number 5411, third grade promotion and retention, to my knowledge, you see, you mentioned earlier that it's just updating language based on updating laws and anything else?
Well, we have this one on separate from 9.9, so, so 9.9, the second reading is there is no major changes there.
Oh, okay.
So, it's, it's just some slight changes in language because of state statute or current case law, or just some change in language to, to help with clarity of, of the languages. 9.8 is a new policy that is in regards to Act 20, the, the new read-in law that was enacted starting this year in, in the state of Wisconsin. So, this particular policy, we're required to have a, a promotion, third grade promotion and retention policy in place by July, but it, but it won't go into effect until 2027. But we're required to have it on the books and adopted by, by July. So, this policy completely comes from Neola, and it is completely based on the, the new state statute that, that made Act 20 law.
Okay, and that will be brought on out in the June meeting then?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything with 9.8, we're moving on to 9.9?
9.9, that's the only one that requires a motion.
Okay.
So, this is the second reading, possible adoption of volume 34, number one.
And this was just, you know, the update on Neola that's out?
Yep, yep, this is just the updates on, on some subtle language stuff. It's no new, uh, major changes in policy, just, just clarity and just some, some wording changes.
Okay, you need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the new and revised Neola policies.
On second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That's the last item that we need to take action on. I would need a motion to go into closed session. We do have some things to look at there, so.
All right. Board of Education reserves the right to declare closed session pursuant to state statutes 19.85, sub 1, sub CE and F, for the purpose of review and possible discussions relating to employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, 2025, 2026 co-curricular pay schedule, supervisory pay, new open enrollment application ins and outs for 2025, 2026, and support staff wage schedule in handbook language.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in second, we'll do a roll call vote. Loken?
Aye.
Helbach?
Aye.
Mal Rooney?
Aye.
Kreshak?